Welcome back, everybody. I'm going to do a quick roll call so that we can make sure everybody can be heard. Dr. Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax?
Here.
Mr. Frisch?
Here.
Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Here.
Ms. Marin? Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Omage?
Here.
Ms. Bukarski?
Here.
Ms. Sizemore-Hizer?
Here.
Ms. Tolan?
Here.
And Ms. Marin. We're going to go ahead and proceed, and I'm sure Ms. Marin will be joining us. The next part of our session is the review of the Student Rights and Responsibilities, and this is going to be presented by a team of Ms. Johnson, Dr. Duran, Ms. Scott, Ms. Williams, and Dr. Mayo, who is an outside consultant to us. I'm going to allow Dr. Duran to do a brief introduction, and then we will go to Ms. Johnson for the presentation. Dr. Duran?
Good afternoon. Thank you. If someone could bring up the PowerPoint presentation while I'm doing my overview, I would appreciate that. So, good afternoon. Really excited to be here to share with the board an opportunity to lay out the framework for our proposed SRNR regulation. As many of you know, the SRNR regulation has been a part recently of our equity work as we've done a deep dive into our discipline practices. Last year, we had three studies conducted at the direction of the school board involving many stakeholders that dug deep into what our practices were, what our policies were, and what were some suggestions that we needed to do to move forward to break down the disparities that we saw. Subsequent to that, there was significant changes to last year's SRNR where we had a vision for equitable and supportive discipline put in place that the board adopted last year. Developmentally appropriate interventions and sanctions were put in place last year by the board. Behavior charts to support consistency were added. Some changes in practice for students with disabilities and clarifying language regarding Title IX. So, that was all last year, and that was the beginning of our journey. Part of all those findings of the three studies shared with us that we needed to have a phased approach to make sure that we would continue to address the disparities that we saw in the data. But today, you're going to see that we have a continued revision of the SRNR where we are working here to include more positive behavior approach to the code of conduct that you'll see with appropriate consequences and supports needed for students. We're really excited that our work has been influencing the state, our restorative justice model, our work with our county partners, and I want to publicly thank Bob Birmingham, Judge Carr, for being a partner in this work with us. And also, you'll hear today in the presentation that we're also going to be a pioneer in piloting new behavior codes that will support progressive discipline practices through leveled responses that focus on the impact of students' behaviors. So, we're really excited to be leading that work at the state level as well. In the next few weeks, we'll have an opportunity to dig deeper into the proposed regulation. I'm sure you'll have a lot of questions. Our action on this is not until June 18th, so we will be really open to questions today, but we'll have a lot of opportunity to dialogue with any board member between now and June 18th. Want to really thank the board for last year. As part of our Discipline for Equity Plan and requests, you agreed to fund a coordinator of equity and student conduct, who's Carrie Williams, and she has been phenomenal in leading this work and helping us get to where we are today. We also are joined, as you said, the Chair Corbin Sanders, by Dr. Rob Mayo and also Dr. David Osher, both from the American Institute for Research. They have been collaborative partners with us and consulted with us throughout this past year after they presented their findings to the board a year ago. So, with that, we're really excited to dig into this and to share with you how the development of our SRNR has really come to fruition through an equity lens. And so, I will turn it over now to Ms. Johnson, who will be introducing the rest of the team and also some principals who are with us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Duran. Before I get started with the presentation, I just want to welcome and introduce the principals that have joined us today. We have Toni Copeland from Westfield High School, Liz Noto from Hernan High School, Cindy Conley from Irving Middle School, and Renee Miller from Key Mill Elementary School. We appreciate them being a part of the conversation today, and they're going to be available to really speak to how they're impacted by the SRNR in their schools. So, our agenda today for the presentation includes a brief background session that outlines our SRNR processes since last year and general updates that will improve consistency in our practices or align the narrative with changes to other regulations that inform our SRNR. And I will refer to our Student Rights and Responsibilities as the SRNR throughout this presentation. I will share details about new state legislative requirements that impact our regulation that you heard a little bit about from Mr. Boyd. Also, highlight the changes that have been made to align our regulation with the Virginia Model Guidance for Positive and Preventive Code of Student Conduct. In addition, there are edits that were made to correct some inconsistencies from last year, and this version of the document will also align our practices with our current practices and our operating procedures. And finally, I'll review proposed changes based upon the recommendations from our continued work with the American Institutes for Research. FCPS does update Regulation 2601, Student and Responsibilities annually with input gathered from various stakeholder groups to enhance understanding and usefulness of the documents. On this slide, you see a high-level timeline of the work that has focused on this regulation and equitable disciplinary practices. As Dr. Duran mentioned, last thing, FCPS completed a three-pronged discipline study that concluded with reports from our internal study from the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement, along with a complete study by Temple University and the New American Institutes for Research. Based upon the recommendations from each study, the Equity Plan for Discipline Policy and Practices was developed and presented to the board last summer. If you have the presentation open, you see in blue we've added hyperlinks here to the studies and the resulting Equity Plan. Efforts have continued throughout this year to put measures in place to support equitable outcomes. Dr. Mayo from the American Institutes of Research has consulted closely with us on the revisions this year as the division continues to focus on the recommendations from the studies and the implementation of the Equity Plan. The Virginia Board of Education developed an extensive model guidance for positive and preventative code of student conduct policy and alternatives to suspension document that was released in January of 2019. The state expectation is that the model guidance is fully implemented in districts across the state by the 2021-22 school year. This year's revisions to the SRNR bring us into alignment with the state's model guidance, and our code of conduct is being used as a model within the state. FCPS actively participates in state code of conduct guidance committee meetings throughout the year. As a result of this year's legislative session, there are a number of bills that directly impact the SRNR regulation. Three in particular are House Bill 837, Address Code Equity Act, House Bill 415, which addresses suspension and access to graded work, and House Bill 257, and Senate Bill 729, which amends the behavior incident that principals are required to report to the police. We will review each briefly later in the presentation. First, we'll address general updates. The next slide will highlight the new distribution protocols, which will not only save financial resources, but is also environmentally friendly. We will touch briefly on the clarifying language that was added to the attendance portion of the regulation to reflect changes made throughout this school year. In an effort to conserve resources and expedite processing time, we'd like to move to a hybrid printing approach for next year. Our student quick guides will be expanded, and the back page will have a QR code that will link parents to the regulation on the FCPS website in English and seven additional languages. The back page of the quick guide will be the acknowledgement signature page. Copies will still be printed in all languages and made available to the school for parents and students to pick up from the main office upon request. This practice is in line with what some of our neighboring divisions are doing as well. It is recommended that we update the attendance language in our regulation to include language that describes why school divisions focus on chronic absent rates for all audiences regarding the regulation. The Virginia Department of Education now uses each school's chronic absenteeism rate as one of the measures to determine school accreditation and school quality. Next, we'll move into legislative changes that impact our SRNR regulation. The new language in our dress code has been pulled from the language in House Bill 837, the Dress Code Equity Act. You'll note the language changes in teal on the slide. The revision expands types of head coverings that can be worn in school and addresses how staff will interact with students when correcting dress code infractions. Previous language only allowed head coverings for religious or medical purposes. The new language allows head coverings to be worn for a bona fide purpose to include religion, ethnicity, and medical reasons. It also specifically addresses that staff will not make contact with the student or require a student to undress in front of anyone to become compliant with the dress code, and that dress code standards apply to all students. FCPS was ahead of the curve the last few years as we had already transitioned much of the language to address discreetly speaking with students in a dignified and respectful manner. On this slide, you see the specific bills that impact SRNR. The first bill, House Bill 837, not only outlines the new dress code requirements, but also requires the Board of Education to include in its guidelines and model policies for codes of student conduct, standards for reducing bias and harassment in the law enforcement of any code of conduct. We have adapted a chart that you see on the screen right now from one of our neighboring county partners to include in our school-based administrator toolkit. The purpose is to ensure that administrators are utilizing reflective and equitable discipline practices.
Excuse me, Ms. Johnson. Can I ask someone to enlarge that chart so people can see it a little bit more? It's not well displayed. Thank you.
Carrie, can you make that a little larger, Carrie, or Eileen?
We can, but to show up on your individual screens larger, you each need to expand it under Show Controls on the left.
Great. Thank you. I apologize, but I did want people to see this chart. It is a very good decision support flow chart.
So, just backing up a bit. The purpose of this is really to ensure that administrators are being reflective in their practices and ensuring the equitable discipline as well. And this is going to be addressed in the required trainings for all administrators over the summer. So, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 415, it states that if a student has been suspended from school, makeup work will be provided by the school during the period of suspension and graded upon return. We already had language that allowed students to make up work during suspension, but we need to clarify that all the work will be graded upon return. And lastly, House Bill 257. The language in our SRNR has to be updated to reflect which behavior incidents constitute a felony and must be reported to the police and which misdemeanor offenses are reportable at the discretion of the principal. We don't have a specific list to add yet. We're still waiting for that information from the state. I referenced earlier that the Virginia Board of Education produced a document that provides model guidance to school systems across the state. Next, we're going to talk about how we are using some of that guidance to impact our SRNR. Based on this model guidance, one of the major changes to the SRNR regulation is the addition of new codes, which remove the labels of behaviors that we've used traditionally and focuses on the impact of the behavior, which increases by categories. This will ensure more consistent definitions and record keeping across schools to support progressive discipline practices with leveled administrative responses, which focus on the impact of the behavior. The traditional categories from years past, such as the disruptive behavior category, will no longer exist after we shift to the new codes. The revisions to the SRNR were made prior to the state's announcement that they will be delaying the shift to the new database, which will collect these new codes. The new codes were developed by VDOE and were intended to be implemented across the state for the 2021 school year. However, due to COVID-19, VDOE delayed the implementation of the codes until 2021-22. FCPS plans to pilot the new codes in this coming school year to support our discipline vision and philosophy. We have been working with our principals and stakeholder groups during the school year to prepare them for implementing the new codes. The codes move us towards more equitable outcomes in regard to our decision-making around disciplinary consequences, and therefore, we want to continue the work to move forward. We are working with IT in the state to finalize our ability to pilot the new codes, and at this time, we are confident that we will be able to move forward with the document in its current draft date. As guidance is provided by the state, these charts will be adjusted accordingly prior to the final vote on the regulation. I'm going to hand this slide over for Carrie to walk you through an example of the new codes categorized by impact. Carrie?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. This is a screenshot of one of the five categories with the new codes aligned. Category B outlines behaviors related to school operations that could interfere with the daily operation of school procedures. For example, if a student damages school property, the administrator would look within the category B for the best description to match the behavior and assign the student an appropriate consequence based upon the details of the infraction. This would then be coded as a BSO14, a behavior-related school operations versus being coded as vandalism, as we would currently do.
Thank you, Carrie. A final change to the proposed regulation based on the state model guidance is related to self-defense language. The guidance document recommends, but does not mandate, self-defense language to be addressed in the code of conduct. In practice, school administrators consider self-defense when making disciplinary decisions. So, a footnote has been added to Page 30 that states that administrators, at their discretion, may consider self-defense as a factor when determining appropriate disciplinary actions. Moving on to corrections and alignment to practice. A correction needs to be made to revise the term Restorative Behavior Intervention Specialist and updated to reflect the more accurate title of Restorative Justice Practice. In addition, language was updated to reflect that a parent is expected to complete an online information session on the prevention of substance misuse if child is involved in an alcohol or drug SRNR violation. As FCPS has shifted away from the alcohol and other drug seminar model of intervention to the substance abuse prevention specialist intervention, language was updated to indicate that a student can be referred to the substance abuse prevention specialist multiple times for all substance violations. Previously, there were restrictions on who could participate and how often. The next change, the next proposed change, was recommended by principals. The current SRNR regulation outlines the four components of the first-time possession and use response for marijuana, THC, prescription drugs not prescribed to the student, or imitation drugs. The steps included two-day in-school suspension, participation in the FCPS alcohol and other drug intervention program, removal from activities for calendar 21 calendar days, and the completion of a parent information session. Failure to successfully complete the AOD intervention program would result in a mandatory five-day out-of-school suspension. After getting feedback from my high school principals, they felt that it was more important to require the four components of the first-time possession and use consequence in lieu of a five-day out-of-school suspension. This change is intended to promote and incentivize the completion of the two-day IS-in-school suspension with the AOD intervention and decrease instances of parent and student refusal. When a five-day mandatory out-of-school suspension is issued for the refusal of the intervention, the principals felt that keeping a student out of regular classroom instruction for up to seven days for noncompliance does not appropriately align with our philosophy to have the least exclusionary practices in place. There was also concern about punishing a student for noncompliance when it could be that the parent refused the intervention for the child. There are times when parents choose external substance misuse intervention for their children, which is certainly a parent choice that we support. However, unfortunately, there are times that parents refuse any kind of intervention support for their child. For the last segment of this presentation, we will review recommendations from our partners at the American Institutes for Research. An important focus that came out of the board's recommended discipline studies was the recommendation to fully implement with fidelity a multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS framework in the division. It was recommended that we incorporate the MTSS language in the SRNR regulation so that it aligns with our practices and tiered levels of intervention. A multi-tiered progressive approach to student discipline supports our philosophy as a division and supports our work to decrease disparate outcomes. Evaluating student behavior using a whole-child approach takes into account the academic and social-emotional factors that can contribute to misbehavior and helps school teams to implement appropriate interventions to support improved behavior and student success. You see in teal here the specific language that is being proposed. An additional recommendation is to add length between the code charts and leveled charts. This is updated to again emphasize our tiered approach to disciplinary responses to include not only behavior supports, but academic and social-emotional supports as well. The leveled response charts in the regulation, which you can refer to in the redline copy of the proposed regulation on board docs, provide administrative guidance for appropriate interventions, supports, and sanctions assist with maintaining equitable outcomes and consistency, not only within schools, but also across the division. The last slide of recommendations here includes updates to language and needed realignment of the family guide to make it more user-friendly. The phrase "as outlined" in the regulation has been added to make it clear that the narrative in charts give guidance on consequences and that students who receive consequences for certain lower-level behaviors, in fact, cannot be suspended out of school or referred to the division superintendent. It now reads, "Students may be disciplined by school officials to include suspension, reassignment, expulsion, and exclusion from school for prohibited conduct as outlined in the regulation." Previously, the way it read, one would believe that a student could receive all levels of exclusionary sanctions for all prohibited conduct. An example could be, a student cannot be reassigned or expelled for attendance infractions such as truancy or tardiness. In fact, per state code, a student cannot be suspended out of school for such an infraction. The addition of this language makes it clear that the narrative for each category of infraction details the levels of consequences that can be assigned, and not all prohibited conduct may result in suspension, reassignment, expulsion, or exclusion from school. New flow charts were added to provide families assistance with understanding the regulation in a shorter form and expectations of the steps during disciplinary incident. You'll see posted on your screen right now the general disciplinary procedures that will be added to the family guide. The flow charts were a recommendation from AIR study in last spring and also from the consultation on the revisions for the next school year. Carrie has pulled up the flow chart for special education disciplinary procedures as well. Thanks, Carrie. So, our next slide, as Carrie transitions back to the presentation. Before I conclude, I do want to provide an update to the progress we're making on developing intervention program for students who have a first-time drug or alcohol misdemeanor violation outside of school. We've been working closely with our county partners to create a diversion program for our FCPS students to keep them out of court involvement to the best extent possible. We have a drafted memorandum of understanding that we've been working on with the juvenile court representatives, working on the logistics of how we can support and divert our students who are caught, for example, with marijuana in the community. We hope to utilize our substance abuse specialists to provide direct interventions to these students, then hopefully bypassing direct court involvement in keeping them in school. As soon as we have the details finalized, we will provide a briefing of the plan to the board. In closing, you see on this slide a timeline for the SRNR regulation. The SRNR was posted for new business last Thursday, April 23rd. The work section is scheduled for May 11th, but clearly, that is incorrect as we are presenting to you today. The board is not scheduled to take action on this, as Dr. Duran mentioned, until June 18th. So, that provides us with opportunities for further discussion. And with that, that concludes the formal presentation.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson, for this very thorough presentation. And I can tell you, in looking at it, it is significant progress from where we were just a year ago. So, with that, I've got a number of people who would like to ask questions, starting with Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Coming. I can never push these buttons fast enough. Okay. I do want to thank you for this presentation. And also, I sent an email yesterday asking for clarification, specifically tying this to what the recommendations were from our staff as well as to the study. And I really appreciate what I think are some revisions to the presentation, so thank you for that. I do think with respect to my questions, I will have a few next steps. So, Karen, you probably want to put me down for a go-back. Overall, I do think the expectations are clearer, but I still wonder how, with the flow chart and a number of symbols in the MTSS, whether it can lead to disparities. And so, I have some concerns on how we plan to monitor that and avoid disparities. I'm also concerned about how clearly we are communicating what parents can expect when discipline occurs. I was a little unclear on the notice provisions. I think that some of that language, at least I didn't notice, I didn't see, no pun intended. I didn't see where that was made more clear and what parents can expect. And so, again, I'm looking for those procedural safeguards and a clear expectation of what that notice would be. With respect to our fed students, special education students, it doesn't say what steps. At least, I didn't see clearly what steps would be taken in support of the decisions that would be made. With respect to the glossary, I noticed that restorative behavior intervention, that definition has been removed, and maybe I can get some clarification on why that was necessary or recommended. It has an attendance intervention specialist. I'm wondering if that is a new position. On Page 11, it states that parents can complain to administrators, teachers, et cetera, at the school. I'm wondering about the burden of that process on the local school, how effective that might be, and what supports we may have in place in the event that a parent does not feel that that is sufficient. Can't read my writing. Footnote numbers four and five, in my opinion, are a bit confusing. And on Page 21, there seems to be a severe penalty for synthetic marijuana put in the category of some other pretty heavy-duty drugs. So, I'd like to, you know, I don't know if that's required by the state or not. With respect to threat assessment, I'd like to get some clarification on what the training is there. I guess that's enough to start with.
Okay. Well, let's see what I can hit on after all those questions that I may ask Carrie to weigh in or Deb Scott to weigh in here.
Hold on one moment. Ms. Keys-Gamara, a number of questions were posed, and you've done a thorough analysis of the written document beyond just the presentation, it looks like. So, I'm going to ask you to please share those notes that are now handwritten, but if you could type them up and send them around, that would be helpful as well. Ms. Johnson?
I'm happy to do that, but I didn't do any study beyond what they gave me.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Sure. I'm going to start with the question about how we are monitoring MTSS throughout the system. We put a number of measures in place this year that are new. We started with last summer where we required all the schools to complete an MTSS self-assessment that would... They had to review where they were with providing interventions and developing the framework within the whole-child approach, again, academic, social, and emotional, and student well-being. So, we started with the MTSS self-assessment that came... The final analysis came to our office, as well as to each region assistant superintendent. We also have provided, stepped up, and provided a number of trainings for individual schools. We put a meeting with the region assistant superintendents, their teams, as well as their specialists from the Office of School Support to review where schools are and how we could provide additional supports to them and looking at the data that they have to address. I'm not sure about your question about notice provisions that are not clear, so maybe we can have some conversation about that offline, so we can provide some clarity there. As far as the glossary, I'm going to ask you in just a minute to talk about why that definition might have been removed. Attendance, we've been trying to shift to attendance intervention specialists and away from attendance officers because the job has changed, and we are trying to provide more supports to families. And, and they have different requirements as far as what they are, more counseling, more social work supports to families, moving away from the court approach and reporting to the courts and more about specifically working with students and the families. Parents complain as far as the complaints about the burden. We did ask last year, add last year at the request of the board. There is some language in there about the process of reporting to the region assistant superintendent if there are concerns or complaints. Your footnotes on four and five, I'm going to have to refer to Carrie and the threat assessment training. I'll, I'll ask Deb Scott to speak a little bit about that. So Carrie, can you touch a little bit on the glossary or anything I might have missed there that is under your, that you've reading? Dr. Magno?
Sure, thank you. The restorative behavior intervention as outlined in the glossary is not how we currently deliver our services through restorative justice conferences. So below that in the glossary still exists the restorative justice conference and the ability for schools to contact our restorative justice practitioners and support our schools on an individual basis as incidents occurs. But the outlined restorative behavior intervention is not currently how we implement that at our school level. So we removed that. As far as the inclusion of synthetic marijuana along with some higher level drugs, that is per state code. And I will turn it over to Deb to discuss our threat assessment training and responsibilities and collaborative training through other departments and intervention provision.
Hi, this is Deb. Our threat assessment training is annual and there will be changes to it in the near future. We were awarded a half a million dollar grant and are developing with cognito new modules for administrators and staff. So you will see a change in that threat assessment training, but for now it is done annually. And those new modules will be introduced over the next two to three years.
Thank you very much. I now have Ms. Cohen.
Well, was my time up, Ms. Corbin Sanders?
Yes, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Okay, I'll, I'll just, I'd like to go back. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Cohen?
Hi, thank you. My first question as always will be, how will these changes be communicated to our admins? I'm a little bit concerned about a few of the changes. So if you don't mind just walking me through them. The first one is on page 54. I'm concerned about the change from case manager and a key member to case manager or a key member. And I wondered if you could walk me through how, just define what a key member is of the I E P team. And also, how are we going to ensure that case managers who more often know our kids better than the general I E P team? How can we make sure that they're involved?
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. All of the administrators will receive mandatory training over the course of the summer, which is similar to what we did last year. And then regarding your case manager question, I'm going to ask Carrie to touch on that a little bit about why that decision was made.
Thank you. Within two paragraphs of one another, in and around making the decision. Sorry, first, when taking a statement from a student as well as then making the decision whether or not you're going to suspend, we were simply aligning that language within the revision process last year. Those two, those two paragraphs were conflicting and we wanted to make sure that the same language was in both. That we prefer for them to speak to the case manager first. However, if they are unable to speak to the case manager, then they will go to the next available I E P team member. That typically will be a department chair at the secondary level or to another special education teacher within the elementary level or it could be with another member of the I E P team. And they will review the I E P together to make sure there are no considerations or what they should be considering prior to making the decision. It's simply that the fitting process last year, there's two paragraphs conflicted. And so the change this year is to make sure that they were both in alignment.
My concern with that would be, I don't feel like it's reflected in the language that the optimal is to hit the case manager first. So I guess my question would be, is it possible to revise the language to say, if the case manager is unavailable, then you go to the next? Because I don't feel like that is, that's reflected in the language. And my next question was about the discretionary reporting that I recognize that we just had the update of the House and Senate bill that ultimately passed and gave some discretionary reporting for misdemeanors to our principals. So my biggest concern is I just want to ensure that, that, that we really get good training to our principals about what is, you know, a misdemeanor and how discretion works there. Because I feel like this is one of those areas where it sets up our principals to have unclear expectations about what's to be reported or not. And I think it's potentially an area where we can see unintentional. You know, different people are going to do different things. And then we have students who may have committed the same thing that have very disparate outcomes, whether that information is turned over to the police or not. So that is a great concern to me and I hope before we get to June 18th, that maybe we can have a larger conversation around that.
Ms. Cohen, you do have the flexibility between now and June 18th to introduce amendments to the S R N R draft document. And so I would encourage you, especially with your first point, to put forth an amendment.
Thank you. You know, my, my larger issue is certainly you all are much better experts at this than I am. And so, you know, my question is, let's just make sure for principals that we're ferreting out very clear guidelines. Because I'm not so sure that the legislation was as clear as we would like it to be. So I recognize that that takes some big work on your part of trying to help give clear guidance there. But I'm, I'm concerned about that piece.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Cohen. We now have Dr. Anderson.
Sorry, I've had some difficult, some technical difficulties here. So I apologize for that. I want to echo a little bit what Ms. Cohen shared regarding the training for administrators and staff. You know, as one of these people who served at the school, it is really important that we offer such robust training so that the interpretation, even within the school teams, let alone outside and across the county. Which brings me to some of my points. Primarily, I think on slide 15, we talked about the self-defense, the model guidance there. I think this is going to invite opportunities for inconsistencies. So I would like for that to be stated, identified, because that discretion can really issue where it can tend to be schools to, it might end up being an opportunity for inequitable actions and decisions. Fairly concerned about that. So I'd like to have somebody speak to it. Similarly, with the interpretation on, I believe it's slide 10, regarding the ethnic exemptions for headgear. Again, we get into this place where we do have people evaluating what is or what isn't, and I'm concerned about that. So if somebody could address those two points, then I'll continue with my other two points.
Dr. Anderson, having in and out, so I hope I got what your concerns are about self-defense. That you're concerned about the, the lack of consistency, possible lack of consistency across the district. Is that correct?
That's correct. I apologize. I'm having a lot of technical difficulties. It's been kicked me off for a while.
No problem. I am going to ask one of the, one of the principals to weigh in on that, maybe Dr. Copeland or Dr. Noto. And then I'll have Carrie respond to your concerns about the ethnic exemptions. Mr. Copeland or Dr. Copeland, could you weigh in on your thoughts about the self-defense language or Liz?
Sure, not a problem. Good afternoon, school board members. It's Tony Copeland from Westville High School. Basically, there are instances in which I'll use as an example, a student may have, there may have been an ongoing pattern of bullying and harassment that a kid may have endured, administration was not aware of it, and the student may have lashed out or defended him or herself. He may, an incident in which a student may have been standing and a student assaulted them from the rear. And then the student turned in an effort to defend himself. That's the way I read this. And, and there are, right now, as it's written, both students are considered to have been combatants. And there's no way for us to fairly distinguish between the two.
This is Liz Noto from Herndon High School. Hello, everybody. I would concur with Tony. I think in addition to that, you know, if a student is ever finds him or herself in the middle of an altercation, it can, it can be, it could be a relatively dangerous situation. And we've had students who were trying to, you know, push or, or get away from somebody who might be attacking them. And in the absence of this opportunity, we again have to look at them both as combatants because it's hard to distinguish if it, you know, it's hard to distinguish when we don't have this clause out there that, that, that student wasn't necessarily fighting.
Thank you for that example. If I could kind of go down this path a little bit more. I appreciate the example that you've both provided, but it's still regarding that school officials may at their discretion. That piece for me is of a concern.
Your concern is the consistency, how it's implemented.
I'm not seeing that application piece being sufficiently outlined in the behaviors and responses of school staff. So that's the focus that I'd like for us to have. And I, how much time do I have left?
You have one minute and seven seconds, Dr. Anderson.
Okay, thank you. The other page that I would like to have some conversation about is page eight, the attendance expectation. It talked about the, the changes, but I'm not sure if I saw even in the longer document, the specifics of that. So if you can just kind of bring that to my attention in terms of what should parents be expecting in terms of their student as they engage through the various steps. Once you have X number of attendance or attendance issues, whether it's tardiness, whether it's absences. Can we speak about that a little bit, please?
Carrie, can you address some of that, please?
Sure. I asked Cindy Dickinson, who is, whoever sees our attendance regulations, to look at the language to make sure that it was in alignment with any of the changes that have been made throughout the year to our attendance regulations. And she really just added some updates and clarification. So that information is, is more detailed within our attendance regulations. We just pulled some pieces of that into the student rights and responsibilities. The, the major clarification was in and around the fact that now we are looking at our chronic absenteeism rate as a measure of school accreditation and school quality. So we added that additional language so that a parent would understand why we are both concerned about excused as well as unexcused absences that go towards our chronic absenteeism rate. So there is additional information outlined in our actual attendance regulations.
Thank you for that. I wonder if it makes sense to have some of that conversation here in the S R N R in the document? Because its purpose is to tell parents, you know, if this happens, this is what you should expect. I just wonder if it needs to include it here since it's become such a part of how we view attendance. So I think the last of my questions for right now, so.
Well, Dr. Anderson, you are right on time. The one question that did not get answered was regarding the headgear. And I thought that Ms. Williams was going to answer that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that, Ms. Corbin Sanders.
Yes, so the, the addition of that language comes from the Dress Code Equity Act. And we wanted to make sure that, if you can see where the parent requesting permission for their student to wear the head covering will, will give principal, school principals and assistant principals additional information and clarification around the reasoning by, why the request is being made. That language, the parent request piece has been in our document since 2003, I believe 2004 it was added to make sure that then all additional staff are aware of the ability for the student to wear the head covering as to the reasons behind it. So that other staff in the building will be aware that permission has been granted and that the student is able to wear the head covering after the conversation with the parent. So having those conversations should bring consistency to the administrators who are making those decisions within their school buildings.
And again, I'll reiterate my last point. It's really regarding consistent application through clarity of expectation. So that administrator A offers the same decision-making as much as possible as administrator.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Seismer Heiser?
Very much. I appreciate it. I was just making some notes. I have quite a few questions, but I will try to type those up. So I know we're limited in time. First, I wanted to go back to Dr. Anderson's point about the self-defense and the definition of self-defense. I thank you for bringing that up. I had a question about the consistency. But I also have a question, if we can go to that slide, about the definite, about the statement underneath it, that self-defense will never or can never be used as a justification for any other violation of the S R N R, including but not limited to possession or use of a weapon. While I understand the weapon point, I'm a little concerned as to why it can never, it's very strong language we use for anything else. Let's say a child who's been a subject of bullying is acting out in class or some of these other violations. Why is it not a potential mitigating factor in discipline or other things? That's my first question, if we could address that.
When we were adding this language, we consulted with our legal representation around the best language to use. And we had taken some of the surrounding districts' language. And this was our interpretation that we included. And so it's certainly something that we can, can take a look at. There, I think the focus is really in and of the more serious consequences or behaviors that could occur along with the self-defense. While that is being considered, if that student was then found to have broken or to have another S R N R infraction, that the self-defense would not keep them from being considered for those other infractions as well.
I understand.
Fighting, but not other infractions.
I understand the point. I just want to make sure, being really careful not to box something out that may be related to this. It's just a very strong language that caught my attention. So on slide 10, when we look at the dress code, I'm glad that we've made it that all practices apply to everybody. But I'm also concerned about the consistency here in sort of the definitions of sagging or low cut pants. For example, one, I just want to make sure that we're clear on some of these things. There's a lot of studies around the impact of dress code, especially taking kids out of class. And so I'd like to see a little more guidance on dress code violations that are handled without our students missing class time as much as what's contained in our S R N R. And I can give more specifics on that. But if we could talk about how we're helping our principals understand what is and is not a violation, that would be helpful.
So I'm going to speak a little bit about this because over the years, we have really moved away from providing specific examples of what these dress code violations, as a matter of fact, at the request of the board last year and the year before, we've been taking that language out. So one, Carrie could maybe address a little bit more, but also the principals may want to weigh in in some of the challenges they have when it comes to addressing dress codes and being specific. For example, I have principals who say, why do we have a hat policy and other principals that want to follow that hat policy? So we've been moving away from being more specific for the depression of the principals. And that was at the request of the board the last few years.
Okay, I, anyone, the principals want to weigh in? I understand that I'm just concerned about sagging and low cut pants in particular and its impact on potentially certain populations who wear that or just the impact that may be disproportionate across our school system based on understanding as well. So I do appreciate making it less specific because it's, but I'm concerned about that. I don't think most wants to weigh in before I go to my next question.
I can go ahead and weigh in. This is Carrie Williams. I believe that those examples are in there as a starting point. I believe that those examples are in there as a starting point, and as long as the, they are taken into consideration, along with does the, is the dress causing, or has it risen to the level of the administrative response? So the principals might want to weigh in as, as well, but I do believe that these are all individual case-by-case basis, depending on how the clothing is being worn and then how it is being addressed individually with the student on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have consistency, so we're not having some of these inequable implementations of this. The other thing I want to bring up on page 13, when it talks about our principal, and I think this is in the regulation itself, not in the slides, in the updated, the red line guidance, on page 13, we talk about, I think, our principal should take into account developmental factors. I'm concerned about the lack of taking into account special education factors in this all the way until we get to level three, 10-day school suspension. As we know, our sped students have behavioral issues. A lot of our level one infractions, as I was looking for these new responses, infractions, especially on the, the first set of infractions, the BAPs are, can often be executive functioning or other disability-related behaviors, but there really isn't anything in the response teams or who are to be consulted that include IEP teams all the way until we get to a 10-day suspension, and, and that concerns me. I understand you don't always want to have, necessarily need to have the team consulted, but having some language in there to give guidance to principals, that, to me, I'd like to see that added, or some discussion as to why that wasn't there.
So Ms. Seismarheiser, similar to my comment to Ms. Cohen, and to, I should have said it with Dr. Anderson, that if you want specific changes made to the document, I would encourage you to work with staff to draft up amendments that can then be shared with the board and possibly adopted in June.
Just a point of clarification, Madam Cho, by when, is there a timeframe? I know June is the vote, but is there a timeframe to present before then, or are we bringing it then, just to know what, what the scheduling is?
You will bring it to the processes that you should socialize it amongst your colleagues, and then it will be discussed at the table.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pekarsky.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for our principals that are here today. I did want to comment that I do like the flow charts. I think that's important, especially when we have so many parents that do not speak English as their first language. I do worry a little bit, however, when we start to flip to models where our parents need to ask for things, and this is in regards to the printed SRNR booklets, because I worry about accessibility. I understand why we're doing it. I just wanted to make that comment as, as something to consider. A question about the head coverings, is this permission something that parents need to seek on a yearly basis for their students?
Not necessarily. This is Carrie Williams, and there's been permission granted previously. If a student was changing schools, that might not have been forecasted to the new school if there was a turnover in that particular administration, but it's not intended that it needs to be requested each year.
Is that guidance spelled out anywhere? Do parents know what to expect or what to do when it comes to that?
No, it's not clear, as clearly defined as you're asking.
Okay, we may want to think about that, and I do want to echo Ms. Cohen's concerns when it comes to the principal discretionary reporting. I understand the intention of the bills. However, we do want to make sure that there are no unintended consequences with, with, with that, so I will leave that as something to be discussed in the future. And I would also, if it's possible, I would like to hear from our principals on what their experience has been with the changes, the substantive, substantive changes from last year to the SRNR, if there's been any challenges, or how that has impacted their school, their students and their staff.
So I'm going to, Mr. Dr. Copeland, please go ahead.
Sure, sure, I'm happy to address that. I, it's interesting, not, not finishing out the year, I can, I'll say anecdotally that I did not see a change in the numbers of instances of vaping, but I don't have hard data to, to give you to say whether or not there was a difference. We, we managed to navigate that effectively. Here, here is an example, though, as a result of the instances, and an explanation to the staff of why, you know, students that were vaping, and I'm, and I want to discriminate between vaping versus THC-laced vapes. We had staff members who volunteered to sit in the hallways outside of restrooms because it was becoming such an issue. That's the first time, my now fifth year at the school, that that happened, but it did have an impact. We managed to navigate those students who may have been, may have had incidents that resulted in being referred to the hearings office. I did not necessarily find it challenging to have those students in this school suspension and, and navigate their process through the hearings office. That wasn't a challenge. And I would honestly say, at least at Westfield, those were the two areas that got the most attention this year. We have one incident, a fairly significant altercation, but that, that, I'll, I'll always set that aside as a, as a one-off, but with respect to vaping, vaping continues to be a challenge. It continues to be something that we continue to address our students about. I'll even add that our SGA, I met with them for some ideas to get a, get a student's perspective on ways that maybe we could help, and they came up with some ideas to include putting posters and reminders on the danger of vaping in our restrooms. So, but again, not finishing out the year, I can't provide you with a, with a complete, any type of data to back up what I'm saying, so only anecdotes.
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. Know if anybody else?
I, this is Cindy Conley from the middle school. I would just add that we didn't really have a significant, you know, number of changes either at the middle school level. I think the, the, the thing that was kind of impacting the middle schools the most, and it may not have been at the high school as much, was for students who were placed in in-school suspension, you know, middle school has one safety and security specialist, and so staffing, you know, an in-school suspension for a couple of weeks while something was at the hearings office did get difficult. We found some creative ways to try and handle that, but that did require us to move staff around who wouldn't normally be doing in-school suspension or hiring substitutes to be in that room, or maybe, you know, our, our safety and security specialists being in that room and then not being able to be in other places. So I would say the staffing component of that was a little bit difficult, but as far as incidences and things like that, we didn't really see a significant change.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I have heard the concern with the in-school suspension and staffing, and I'd like to hear, I guess, from Dr. Braybrand or our leadership team, what are we doing to address that? Is this just, you know, in, in a couple of schools, or has this been a concern that you've heard throughout a larger number of schools?
Dr. Braybrand.
Yeah, so Ms. Pekarsky, we have heard lots of schools do use staffing, sometimes instructional assistant positions to staff ISS or in-school suspension. They have asked about additional staffing to be able to provide that, and it's been one of those balancing acts about how to continue to support the principals as they implement the new SRNR and providing additional staffing. We didn't cut back any staffing in this budget. We did allow some carryover to remain to create some room for principals to make some of these decisions, and it's something we're going to continue to monitor and try to work with each school on a school-by-school basis if they're having difficulties supporting in-school suspension in their schools.
And Ms. Pekarsky, I will add, this is Dr. Ron, last year when we did our Equity Discipline Plan, and you have a hyperlink there in the presentation, you will see one major thing we did find was the resources needed at the middle school and elementary in particular. So that's number items seven and eight in the ongoing recommendations for resources needed to truly support all the needs that we're talking about today. Middle school and elementary was a finding from last year.
Thank you. And my last comment, and I'm finished, is just ensuring that we're, we're giving robust professional development so that our, our principals and our staff have all the resources they need to be successful when, when they implement these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pekarsky. Ms. Omeish.
Thank you. This is another topic I have many thoughts about and look forward to our work session and future conversations. I will probably need to go back and say that right now, but starting here with some big-picture pieces, I wanted to ask about, so with the restorative justice practitioners, what role they have beyond just intervention for substance abuse, you know, behavioral, trauma-informed kind of work with our students? So I'll start with that.
So that, working with our substance abuse would be, our substance abuse prevention specialist, our RJ, practitioners do not typically become involved with students who are involved with substance abuse, and we'll ask Stefan Maschall, who supervises our RJ, to talk a little bit about what the practitioner's role is. Stefan, could you weigh in here, please?
Yes, afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So the role of the restorative justice practitioner is, is multifold. One is they certainly assist schools in responding to students disciplined when some form of harm has taken place. They are also able to meet with teachers and administrators and provide trainings for your teachers for restorative practices that look to prevent those inappropriate behaviors that may occur in the classrooms, as well as form or work to form positive relationships between our students and our, and our students.
Okay, thank you. Were you finished? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Omeish.
Okay. Yeah, so, so just considering, you know, I, I think as, obviously, the school board only sees cases that really have escalated or are significant beyond 10-day suspension and whatnot, but I, I would love to see, you know, diversion for behavioral. I mean, we know that some students, you know, act out as a result of traumas and challenges, and that's a part of how we educate the child. So I, maybe outside of the restorative justice piece, I know we have our SAS teams and whatnot, but I'd love to hear a little bit about what's in place and, and how we provide families with notice that that's a resource.
Sure, our, our clinical supports, I'm including in that, our psychologists, our social workers, and our counselors provide support to students that may be experiencing trauma. They do reach out to families that they see are needed or that need that support or may be at high risk. We have been working as part of, as a part of our equity plan, our Title I schools have all been trained in trauma-informed practices, and they participated in pretty in-depth training this year in order to support them and building some teams and how to support that within the school. So as part of our equity plan, the, the goal was to phase in and, and train all schools over the course of the next three, four years or so. So this year, we started with the Title I school. So I don't know, Ms. Deb Scott, if you want to add anything to that, but that's the, the...
No, I think that, that covers it, and that plan is still in place.
Okay, thank you. That's an area that I think we may want to look into. I know moving forward, you know, Dr. Braybrand, as we think about, we've talked about this, obviously, as a board as well, but in conversations about how we can do things differently, especially for some of those desperate situations and wanting to support students rather than discipline them, right, handling it a little bit differently. The second piece here is regarding the, the disparities and potential discrimination and whatnot. I wanted to ask about whether it's possible to have a process, I don't know if that would be through the ombudsman's office, or having a structure that's similar to Title, Title IX reporting, where that can be handled and what our strategy is to eliminate that moving forward with the SRNR, with discipline in general.
Sure, we could certainly have that conversation about what that would look like. The ombudsman has taken a number of calls and provides support and directed parents or staff as needed, so that's certainly something we can discuss.
Dr. Duran, do you want to briefly address how the ombudsman is, is dealing with some of those concerns today?
Sure, yes. When the ombudsman receives any of those types of concerns, he, Mr. Perry, would be working to connect the families with, first of all, making sure that they understand the process, and a lot of times answering questions on what their rights are, providing them with clarity on what their rights are, and then also making sure that they're connected with the various offices that could support them. So it's really, he's a connector, but I found that most of the opportunities where he is helping parents around what you've asked, Ms. Omeish, it's really helping them to understand what their rights are and walking them through that.
And also the reporting, Dr. Duran, so Ms. Omeish knows about that as well.
Oh, that, can you reference that reporting? I'm not sure what that question is.
The ombudsman's reports, he actually reports to the school board.
Yeah, so each month, each quarter, the ombudsman does provide a report with the high-level overview of what those are, and then yearly will be coming to do an annual report in the form of a work session to unpack some of that, and certainly that's to the board and to the public, but regularly the ombudsman will be, works with the various offices to provide them the data and issues that are occurring.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I appreciate that. Yes, we will be notified of this information as expected, but I, I think there's a piece, as you pointed out, Dr. Duran, that there are connectors. So then what is the office, you know, or what is the support that we have in place to systemically say, you know, zero tolerance, that kind of thing, but then also support families? And I think the expectation of folks reaching out to an ombudsman's office is already a bit of a barrier, just, just for, you know, understanding, because as a system, you know, benefit of the doubt, everyone's doing their best, best intentions on the ground. We remain, I mean, the, as we know, parent surveys, right? The PTA, when they did their robust survey, found minority parents tend to report this as their number one concern. So I, I mean, and experientially, what I hear on the ground, I think there are serious things to address, and I, I'd love to hear, I mean, Dr. Braybrand, as a, as a system, you know, us to think of a strategy or a plan to have, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, whatever it is, we want to eliminate some of these, these, these disparities we're seeing, right? And, and at least minimize them. I mean, special ed and race in particular, right? We see three to, two to three times more likely infraction or disciplinary process. So did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I do want to say one thing. One of the things you've shared and several board members has is fidelity of implementation. How do we give tools to better implement for our principals' discipline in schools? If you look at the SRNR from two or three years ago to now, you'll see a major transformation in this document, and one of the advantages of what we're proposing this year are these flow charts. The reflective considerations prior to disciplinary action is part of reducing bias in administrator decisions as they're making them with kids. These are, these flow charts are really going to help with the right training, which we're going to be doing professional development on, and then follow-up by looking at school-by-school discipline data, which is what we're starting to do, look at discipline data the way we've typically looked at SOL data. What are the patterns? What are the trends? What are the gaps? In this case, the gaps in disproportionate discipline for certain students. So I think these flow charts are really going to help us ask the right questions and have better fidelity of implementation, and then it's going to be follow-up school-by-school at looking at their own data. You heard Dr. Copeland talking about anecdotal versus having that data in front of him to be able to review, and we are creating a system-wide referral form that's going to allow us to have the, the data entered the same way in every school at that moment of teacher referral. So I really think these flow charts, the referral form, are going to put us in a place to better get the data and then to better... are going to put us in a place to better get the data and then to better monitor it and follow up where we see disparities.
Yeah, I'm encouraged by these. Thank you. Yeah, I'm encouraged by these steps to see where they take us in the coming years and checking that data. Think of other ways. Is my time up?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'll, I'll take a go back.
Okay, thank you. I now have Mr. Frisch followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm grateful to see some of the changes in here that reflect some of the priorities in the superintendent's new advertised budget, specifically around substance abuse prevention specialists, investing more there. In particular, seeing the reference to deleting the information regarding alcohol and drug intervention. Previously, you know, capping that at one time or, and now making it clear that that is not something that is no longer an option for students who have continued issues with substances. It sends a powerful message that we're not giving up on them. So I do want to thank Ms. Johnson for her continued work to advance these issues. There's a lot of shame trapped in discussions around substance abuse, and I'm not just talking about students who, you know, drink or have, you know, been caught with marijuana. I'm talking more about students who are addicted to substances. And there's a lot of shame for their parents too. And a lot of time, parents who have students who are substance dependent share this shame and they feel alone. So knowing that the school division will continue to do what it can to assist them with their children will be a relief, I'm sure. Ms. Johnson, can you talk a bit about our intervention programs? One of the things that I've always seen as key for substance abuse prevention and intervention is that students or whoever the intended target is capable of relating to the person sharing information. Are we doing anything to bring students who have successfully completed these programs back into the programs to share their experiences?
Mr. Frisch, I, I, I don't know exactly if that's happening from school to school, but I think that's a very good question that we need to ask and, and probably incorporate into our substance abuse prevention program. We are very excited and the principals have advocated for having this substance support within schools. We're doing a very, we're working very closely with our community partners at the Community Services Board. We developed such a great relationship. We were able to do warm handoffs, which means some of the greatest concerns we've had in the past, a similar program many years ago. Well, we weren't making those connections. Students might have been referred, but they weren't getting actually connected if they had, they needed high level support. So now we're actually making that connection with the parent and for the parent to ensure that we're really getting students connected with the right supports and services. So I could go on and on. It is imperative, and the principals will talk about this as well, I'm sure, to be able to provide this individual support to each pyramid because we are taking a tiered approach where our tier one is very much about our education and prevention. And then our tier two, how are we providing individual groups or, or small group supports? And then the individual support that students might need, not just with the education piece of the substance, but the the actual counseling and support of the students. So we're very help, happy and, you know, thank you to Ms. McLaughlin was pushing for this for many years, that we are trying to, this is initially trying to kind of mimic what the Second Chance Program was in Arlington. To me, we're, we've developed something even better by keeping students in school and providing the supports in school within the community. So I could get on, but I hope that gives you some.
Yeah, I think the in-school supports are key. You know, a lot of the times we're talking about an illness here. So treating it as such and making sure that parents know that there is a path for normalcy at some point in the future is paramount. On page thirty-five, section B two, it talks about how students will participate in these programs and that failure to do so could result in, or will result in out of school suspensions for three days. How much time do students have to complete these programs? I'm not certain how long the program is and can parents opt out for professional treatment as an alternative, professional outpatient treatment as an alternative?
Yes, parents can opt out, but we, and, and as far as the, the amount of treatment for some students take more time than others and depending on whether they're participating, participating in small groups. Stefan Mascol, do you want to weigh in? Is there any information I'm leaving out about how long students are treated?
Each, each case is, is unique and, and so it's difficult to say how long each student will work with their substance abuse prevention specialist. I will say though, that the moment that a referral is made to the substance abuse prevention specialist by a school staff member, it could be a counselor, it could be a school administrator. If, if a student has violated the SRNR and the administrator has now informed the parent as well as made that referral to the substance abuse prevention specialist, the SAP, if you will, will take one week to contact the parent to request a signed parent form that will allow our SAP to then work with, work, work with that parent. We allow that one week because we, we totally understand how busy people are. Some, you know, some people work multiple jobs or you might miss an email or might miss a phone call. So we do want to allow some flexibility. So within that one week, we ask our SAPS to make three attempts to get that signed permission form. And if we get that signed permission form, we immediately begin to work with that student. If we are unable to obtain that signed permission form, we then go back and inform either the school counselor or, or the administrator. There are times when we will contact a parent and they will inform us that, that their child is already working with, with a provider outside of the school system. And as long as the parent signs off saying, yes, my child is, is already working with a provider, then, then you look at that as saying this student is, is receiving whatever intervention or, or treatment they need.
Thank you. I mean, the last thing I'll say on this front, on page thirty-six, I do have some concerns about our approach to second time offenders, so to speak. But those concerns predate the changes that we're talking about today. One thing I wanted to raise before I finish is that I have visited with, you know, many of the GSA clubs in FCPS. And I have heard from many of them, many of the students in these clubs, that they no longer report incidents of bullying or harassment based on their LGBTQ status. For a number of reasons, it could lead to being outed at home. It could, it could lead to a number of issues. So particularly when it comes to mispronouncing or dead naming trans students. So I'd like to see us taking an approach that makes it easier and, and and easier for those reportings to happen when students are uncomfortable doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. I have Ms. McLaughlin.
I guess, thank you. I, I do want to express appreciation to Ms. Johnson and Dr. Duran, who have taken the lead in what have been many years of advocacy by current board members and prior board members. Older board members know, especially Ms. Darinat Kofax, that I have spent more than 10 years trying to help FCPS move toward restorative justice. And while I'm thrilled at the things that are being outlined in today's PowerPoint, I do want to encourage my new colleagues to please follow the link that is in the PowerPoint on, that brings you to our June seventeen, twenty nineteen school board meeting where there are multiple reports from external experts that the board requested and Dr. Duran did a highly capable job of executing. I know on the call I saw earlier, Dr. Osher and Dr. Mayo, who were part of the American Institute for Research and had a thirty-four page report and PowerPoint to us about their crosswalk of our practices. So there's really not enough time today to go deeper into a lot of this, but I just want my new colleagues to know because you are so passionate and share a lot of my desire to see us to continually improve. Please, when you get a breather this next few months, I hope you can get a chance to look at this. At a macro level, what I would like to say to Chairman Corbett Sanders is, I think we absolutely need to have, need to have a follow-up work session before we vote on the SRNR. I appreciate that we can always bring amendments, but this is important work. The prior board and this board are investing a lot of time to get things right. And so I hope that at the end of this session, people will join me in supporting that. We have the time. We have the opportunity since this presentation was done sooner than expected. Please build in a work session so we can talk about that. We without a doubt need to do some refinements. That's our job as the board. There are issues about discretion that are actually captured in the research reports that I want to make sure my colleagues know about. So the things that you've all talked about today so far, fellow board members, you're correct. We're making progress, but we need to get better. And part of that comes from direction at the top about how we prevent disproportionality through some of the areas where we still have latitude and discretion. And I do believe that working collaboratively, we can do that through another work session to refine what we have in front of us. And then finally, we're going to also need another work session because we have not covered what has been the training for our hearings office on best practices. And that was a follow-on motion that the board gave Dr. Braybrand last year. And it's been acknowledged that that's still something they're working on, but this board needs to know about that before we vote on the SRNR. So yep, thank you. I know I ran out of time.
Yes, and take a look, we will be having a deeper dive on our discipline process and hearings office on our schedule.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that, but I do know that in terms of my question, I do think that it's important that the existing board understand where we are on that.
We understand and that we're providing such an opportunity, but we'll come back to that one. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Boating?
Hello. First and foremost, just like to apologize for my attire. I was also doing homework. So to kind of, I took some notes while this was going on and I want to look at slide eleven. One of my questions is kind of like about this whole, the thing as a whole scope, but just specifically slide eleven. And it kind of, I want to ask, how are we making sure that all these things are being enforced? Because in all honesty, everything that's being presented is all like wonderful and dandy and stuff. But in all honesty, a lot of these things have already been talked about, have already been approached, but I must say, as a black student, as a student, also as a black brother, I also know that it's not. And how do we ensure that certain things are not being abused or taken advantage by certain people in power, like for example administrators? I'd love to think that all administration has the best in mind for all their students. But I can, I've seen, and I think most of us have also seen that that is not always the case. So I want to make sure that there are things in line to ensure that these things are being followed and enforced. And in slide sixteen, I think Dr. Anderson spoke to this. And I wanted to say that in my personal, like in my personal opinion, I feel some type of way about the whole self-defense trope. And I heard what the principals had to say and I like to thank them for giving them, giving the, what's it called? They're saying what like, what's going on on their part, but I still feel as if it's to the detriment of many students, how they are still going to be considered combatants because that goes into their record and that is awful, in my opinion. And I understand the difficulties with it, but I still think that there should be a deeper dive into it. And I'm not sure how much time I have left, but before I end, I just also wanted to say, I've always expressed that I have issues with discretionary language as though like, for example, should, could and may. And in all honesty, I brought it up before and I'm not really sure what goes on afterwards. So I don't know what's going to happen. Like if you could later on keep me in the know of what's going on because like frankly, I'm gonna be honest, I really don't know what's going on with the, with the progress of this. And I know like people at the MSAOC, the committee, they also share the same concern, but to reiterate before I leave this off to like the questions I asked, I just want to say thank you for everyone who put this work in. It's very important work and I'm glad to see like progress that's been made.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boating. Before we go to our follow-up or our follow-ups, I'm going to just make a couple of comments myself. Specifically, I have some concerns and I suggested this to Ms. Johnson when we went through the slides regarding the discretionary or the language associated with hats on page ten of this presentation. Because there's not a delineation between the use of the wearing of head scarves or head coverings for religious purposes versus ethnic. And I want to make sure that we are very clear that we should not be requiring people of different religious persuasions to have to request their ability to honor their, their religion. Secondly, I do have a question regarding, and it's really not associated with the SRNR going forward, but it's a clarification as to what our substance abuse professionals are doing to reach out to various students who had exhibited challenges with substance abuse prior to the lockdown and are now in a vulnerable position because they have been, our schools are closed and they may not have those supports in place. And so if somebody could answer both of those questions, then we will have Ms. Darinak Kofax speak because she has not spoken yet. Yes, our substance abuse prevention specialists have been reaching out. I believe the last number was over two hundred and forty connections with students or reconnections with students. But Ms. Corbett Sanders, I don't have the criteria of who specifically they are reaching out to. I do know there are students that must have been on their list of concerns or at risk to start off with, or they already touched base with. So regarding your other question and your concern about requiring parents to honor their, the request to contact the principal about a religious, ethnic or medical purpose for wearing a head covering. I will say, and principals can lay in here, that there are multiple things that occur within a school and, and different situations. And I, I think that there could be situations where perhaps a head covering is worn for one reason, but it may have some connotation to it. And so there may be instances where it is appropriate for administrators to step in and possibly provide some better structure in decisions around what a student can wear. And maybe a principal has an example. I know one person shared with me if some, if a student came in wearing a really large cowboy hat that had an inappropriate symbol of some sort on it and may have said that it is something related to ethnicity or their religion. So I do think that there needs to be some structure and I'm going to ask either Tony or Liz to weigh in and provide their opinion as well.
Sure. I can think of, well, well, first I want to say at least in, in my time in all school administration, I've, I've never seen a student who had a religious reason who wasn't respectfully able to say that I'm wearing this hat for a religious reason. I would also add that quite frankly, throughout the course of a school year, you come to know, not only as an administrator, but as a staff, and I'll use my safety and security staff as an example, since they tend to pass kids in the hallways and, and aren't in the classroom with them. They tend to know who those students are without any type of, without any type of formal documentation being shown to them. And, and where there are questions, they follow up with an administrator. We do have a contingent of kids at least at Westfield who are also, who are also required to wear hats or covers because of some medical condition, i.e. they can't be exposed to sunlight. It hasn't been my experience and, and again, it hasn't been my experience that, and, and I understand the need to want to provide a way to make it formal. But I have not found that this has been an issue, i.e. parents or, or us questioning a religious reason for a student wearing some type of head cover. But that's just, that's my experience.
Dr. Copeland, you are raising exactly my concern. I don't want a child to have to justify their religious head covering. I don't want a child to have to justify their religious head covering. If they are wearing a head covering and they are Muslim or Jewish or Sikh, whatever that their affiliation is, they should not have to have a parent's permission to do so. And I don't see the equivalency between wearing a cowboy hat with inappropriate language on it to those head coverings. And that's, that's my only concern is I don't want this to be considered a requirement, but rather that if there is a question, then somebody can reach out to a parent.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax.
Yes, Ms. Johnson, I just have a question on the change of language to the dress code. Because I think I'm, what I would like to see, if you can point me in current documents, where the, what the changes would look like in the red line document? Because I know there was a little bit of a mistake last time. There, there was a version that went out where it was, changes were made, but not all the changes were made. I believe that happened and then we had to update it. So can you just point me, and then I may go have a go back, where in the red line document, I can find what changes you're suggesting versus where we were from last year? Because I'm trying to find out, I'm trying to recall where we were last year with the updated and what changes you want to make in addition to that.
Yes, Carrie Williams, could you weigh in here since you've practically memorized this document, please?
Sure, it can be found in the red line document at the bottom of page six and the beginning of page seven. And you will see there the strike through of last year's language and then the updates to this year's language, plus the addition. So some of it has been clarified and then the addition of the language to align us with these House bill.
Okay, all right, thank you. I may have a go back. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Amish? I'm going to, for go backs, we're going to limit it to two minutes, please.
Thank you. I want to kind of bring back the point our student representative so articulately, articulately spoke about. And just saying that I don't know that at this point, we have set the tone for zero tolerance of this kind of stuff. And on the point on head covering in particular, which a number of people brought up, the hijab being an aspect of that, that I would be mindful of the language we use surrounding this in the particular document. I know, you know, we've said, school staff will deal with these kinds of situations. I'd just be mindful of that and the tone it conveys. And echo that the burden shouldn't be on families to kind of opt in or opt out. And knowing, I mean, just in 2017, you know, a student by their teacher in Lake Braddock was forced to remove the hijab. So I would imagine, and from what I hear, that that's a consistent concern. And again, emphasizing Ms. Boating's point. So looking forward to, as Ms. McLaughlin pointed out, reviewing some of the restorative justice pieces and then also meeting with staff to talk about the strategy moving forward to mitigate, I mean, I would hope eliminate discrimination on the ground and the implementation piece. Because the vision seems to be in the direction that we are hoping for. I wanted to also comment on the part with not requiring changing in front of one another. I would love to add to that staff also should not be, students should be protected from having to do that in front of staff. And so that potentially is an amendment to the language, which we can look at moving forward in the work session coming ahead. And finally, on the point of religious prayer. So I see it noted, you know, in a current language as almost an afterthought. There's a link that takes to where the procedures are for that. My concern is the extensive restrictions that are in place or requirements for what lead to a student being able to or that, you know, define an appropriate scenario of prayer. Leave a lot of room for unfair kind of judgment of that. I know on the ground, I've heard inconsistencies with this where, you know, in one school, and was my own experience years ago, it's absolutely an opportunity and principal supportive. And in other schools, I've heard principals being almost insulting about, you know, giving kids a dirty, kind of dusty area behind the staircase. So just wanting to flag that as well, my time, I'm hearing. So I look forward to really working with staff diligently between now and the work session. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Could folks, sorry.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, do you want to respond to the comments?
My only comment is we look forward to working together. Our goal is definitely to eliminate the discrimination and the disparities and our disproportionality. So we look forward to the conversation.
If I could add, Chairman Corbett Sanders, I think one of the things that's important is we've been upfront about the issue of disproportionality and discipline. We created the equity profile, we shared our data, and our data around discipline fundamentally showed that we needed to make changes. We brought in an outside consultant. We started to implement some of that work last year. We're implementing more of that work this year and it's an iterative process. We need to continue to put the right guidelines and expectations in place, as the board members have been talking about today. And then it's going to be our responsibility, my responsibility, the leadership team's responsibility, working collaboratively with principals to look at their data. And when we see patterns of disproportionality, that we're providing extra support and guidance to make sure that those issues are addressed. I agree with Kimberly that a lot of our students don't feel discipline has been handled the same or the referral that happens in that classroom isn't handled the same. And we need to address it and we are going to work together to get it addressed. We want every one of our schools to be a caring culture. And it's following up and beginning to really treat discipline data the same way we've treated SOL data. And we've got to work on doing the gaps around discipline the same way we work to close gaps around achievement. So it's a work in progress. I think we're heading in the right direction. And I want you to know, I believe our folks are committed to creating that kind of environment where no one feels that they're getting treated differently. It's not there yet, but I think we can get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, Dr. Braybrand. But I too just want to commend Kimberly for her comments. And I know that we're working hard, Dr. Braybrand, but I, I have to say that I do believe sometimes we have an assumption that bias has not been a part of the decisions that are being made. And I can say in my experience, going from region to region, sometimes there is a very clear difference in how certain situations are being handled. And I think we need to deal with that. I will say that I'm very glad to see the difference in the language with respect to bullying. I didn't get to mention that before. Previously it said, may report, and now says shall report. And I look forward to talking about how we plan to follow up on that. Just following up on some of Ms. McLaughlin's comments with respect to work we've previously done. We've had some extensive conversations about working with the county, with Judge Carr, and the need to bring her and her team to the board as well as to our hearings office. And so I hope that in the upcoming work session, that their input, that we can get an interim report on the work that is being done. Because I think that that may actually help us have a more complete result. My remaining questions, I did send in writing to Ms. Johnson. And if we're running out of time, I'd like to focus on questions two and three. That refers to page 40, paragraph two. It states that administrators may report to the police an assault without bodily injury. I'd like to see more specific language as to when that might be necessary. And on page 44, paragraph three, it states that no student in grades K through three shall be suspended for more than three days. But I did not notice, and perhaps it was an oversight on my part, guidelines for that. And I again, think that both of these are opportunities for disparities.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. Ms. Johnson, do you want to address those?
We continue to do work around our guidelines. And I think that if, you know, starting with our flow charts, I think that's a good place for us to start in addition to the trainings that we do. But we always look for opportunities to provide some additional support for schools in making decisions. And I think they often welcome that feedback. So I look forward to reading Ms. Keys-Gamar's email. And Ms. Keys-Gamar, I'm assuming it's one you sent today recently instead of the one from last night, am I correct?
Yeah, I, Ms. Corbett Sanders asked me to send my questions in writing. And so I sent a summary of what I already asked and I also sent the questions that I'm asking right now.
Thank you.
Before, before, before my time is, I just want to make sure.
Ms. Gamar.
I just have a next step if I want to, and I've already said it. The next step would be that the board have an opportunity to hear.
Next steps next, Ms. McKees-Gamar.
I have both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin? And I am reminding people we're 35 minutes behind now.
That's fine. I just want to quickly ask that as a next step, we also take advantage of the incredible researchers who had already evaluated Fairfax County on the issues of our best practices for the discipline as well as disproportionality that the board go ahead and request that leadership team have, whichever the research teams out of Temple or AIR, do a review of these current changes benchmarked against the recommendations they've given to us. And if there's any other recommendations they would give to the board. This allows the board to have that sort of independent input on our progress. I also see it as beneficial to Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Duran and his team for their hard work for the board and the public to understand the progress we're making, but maybe where we still need to move forward on. And I'd like to make sure that that gets done in a timely way. I don't see why they, we couldn't get at least one of them to review before the board votes June, in June on the SRNR, if there's anything that we've overlooked. And I would finally like to ask, do we have any of the experts on the call still? And can they speak to what they're seeing presented here today and the progress that we're hoping to make?
Ms. McLaughlin, Dr. Mayo is still on the call. I'd love for him to respond to that because he has been actively working with Carrie and the team on exactly what you just described. So since he's still on the call and he's been here, I would love for him to weigh in at this time, Dr. Mayo.
Sure, thank you very much again for having us on the call today. And to Dr. Duran's point, we've been crosswalking our original recommendations with the recent draft SRNRs along the way. And it's been very, very rewarding, if I may say, to see so many of our recommendations from high level to kind of in the weeds, to be taking, taken into consideration and acted upon and integrated into this latest version. And so much thoughtfulness on behalf of the team and reaching out to stakeholders such as the principals on this call to get their feedback along the way. And I think that, given that so much of this was driven by what came from the state, what addressing potential unintended byproducts around a discretion that tries to balance professional, you know, training and discretion and what they know about their kids in the face of some slight base autonomy, which is desirable in a lot of places, is difficult work. And I think that continued discussions and cross stakeholder input, including that from this board, will be important to taking the SRNR to where you'd like it to be.
Excellent. I do appreciate you being with us today, Dr. Mayo. I think I saw Dr. Osher had been on the call earlier. Please extend my appreciation for the time you all are putting into this. And Dr. Duran, I would just say that this, it's greatly appreciated that you've continued to use experts with this work.
Thank you.
I see Dr. Osher was joining us.
Yes, Dr. Osher has been here the whole time. Dr. Osher, do you want to spend just a couple of seconds responding to Ms. McLaughlin's comments as well? And then we're going to move to next steps.
Certainly. I mean, number one, that Dr. Mayo and I have been talking consistently and what he said to you in public is what he's been saying to me in private as well. I think as we talked last year, that the issues in part are implementation, implementation, implementation. And at the same time, how they're experienced by individual students as well as groups of students down on the ground. And I think the issues that people have raised are ones that one has to keep on pushing at. I think that I am persuaded by what I've been hearing, both and what I hear from the board, but also from Dr. Mayo, that you as a, you know, as a group, as a board community, are moving in that direction. I think the issues will even be greater because of COVID-19 rather than before. And I think that, you know, I'm sure you probably know it in certain ways, but I think it's very important to be able to keep on moving and moving more deeply. Since we were with you last year, we produced some free tools which are on issues of trauma sensitivity and other things that may be useful. And I want to pass it back, though, that I feel privileged to be with you and we continue to want to work with you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Osher. Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Boating, I see your hand up. We are about to go to next steps. If you want to just briefly in 30 seconds comment, you're welcome to do so. And then we're going to go to next steps.
Briefly, I just wanted to talk about, I brought up the question about enforcement. And to be honest, that can just be like segue to me at a later time. But I just asked, like, in the future, like, as we're going through this, this is one of the biggest focuses that I had as I was running for student rep. So I asked that I really do want to be included, so please remember that going forward. And I just want to say discrimination at this point is defined as an implementation kind of problem. And we can't really hide behind saying that to mean like that we're doing our job. We got to, okay, I know that's my time, but I just wanted to briefly just say, speak that and ask to be included going forward. Thank you.
Ms. Boating, I can promise you that this board values the time you've spent with us and we will continue to engage you going forward. At least this board member will, and I expect many of the others will as well.
Thank you.
So with that, do we have next steps, Ms. Mulberg?
We do, and I'm trying to pull them up right now. Give me one second.
Great, thank you so much.
And it's not, oh, that didn't work. Sorry.
Looked like a nice piece of modern art, though.
Thank you. Now, okay, I'll find another way to do it. Hang on. It's going to take me a second. It's making me save it as a different type of file, so, sorry. Okay. Okay.
Board members, you're going to have to make the image larger on your own screens.
And unfortunately, I can't do changes while we're going over them. So you'll just have to tell me how you want to change, and I'll send it out to board members later.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
Yes, I think the first one is okay. The second one, I think I would just add to address concerns regarding disparity of implementation. I think everybody was really talking about this. But I think if we can be more specific, it will help us in our future discussions.
Okay.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'm not sure I understand Ms. Keys-Gamarra's first bullet, and I'm just worried the way it was captured. Provide the board an opportunity and receive an interim report reporting the work to minimize referrals to the court?
I think that has to do with the work with Judge Carr and that committee. Ms. Johnson referred to it. And I believe you and I and several of the previous board members have had, I've even expressed to Dr. Brabran that we needed to be able to hear from them. I think that we need to hear from them prior to the completion of the report. I think an interim report would be most appropriate because then I think that it would be more of a collaboration as opposed to, hey, you know, receiving that final thing and then not feeling as though the board had any input.
So Ms. Keys-Gamarra, may I suggest that it's, that your next step reads, provide the board an opportunity to speak with Judge Carr and Mr. Berman about the work that is being done to minimize referrals to the court? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, that's fine.
And I think that's consistent with something that Ms. McLaughlin has also advocated for in the past as well.
We, a lot of us have.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, though, that from what I'd asked for today as a next step, I don't want them just to talk about their interim work that they're doing right now with Scott's team. I also would like for Judge Carr and Bob Birmingham to also speak to how we as a school system can get better on our risk-to-reoffend assessments so that we reduce the involuntary transfers to other schools.
So Ms. McLaughlin?
Yep.
I will put that on the next chair's agenda to put together a plan on how we can make that happen, how we can realize both what you and Ms. Keys-Gamarra are advocating for.
That's fine. I'll just put a note in to explain. I don't see captured here that I had requested that we absolutely, as a board, have a follow-up work session prior to the SRNR vote because we were all racing to discuss today's proposals. And this is important work. We have the time until June. And in the past, we certainly have had more than one work session on the SRNR. And given our new board as a whole, I think that's the best way we can ensure the board's ready to vote, having had better discussion.
I don't think we've had multiple discussions of the SRNR. We've had, we've had separate discussions between the discipline and SRO issues, and then we had the SRNR. I'm happy to work with the vice chair and with Dr. Brabran. And we will look to see where there are opportunities to add to our agenda. But I know that it is going to be a very full month of May.
Well, when's the vote scheduled for?
June 18th.
Yeah. I guess what I wanted more so was to hear from the board, not from you and Ms. Darinat Kofax, if the board members agree that we would benefit, doesn't have to be a long work session. But we have, Ms. Corbett Sanders, in my time, but prior to your arrival, we did have more than one work session to talk about the SRNR because we were doing a lot of work in the year that that happened. I just think this is one of those years we would benefit from having a follow-up work session, not just going straight into a board table vote.
Can I see?
I didn't know if you needed a second for that or not.
Is there a general support from the board to try to squeeze in additional opportunity? If people could show their hands, that'd be great.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, if I may, I had my hand up just to add to this point. It seems like there may be time between the work in May on the budget and the vote on this in June to do this. Maybe late May or early June, just a suggestion.
I appreciate that, Ms. Seismarheiser. As I mentioned, the vice chair and I will take a look at the schedule and try to figure out where we could fit it in depending on the interest from the board. And so that's what we're trying to do, is taking pulse of the board for that interest. And we have your, your hand up, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Omage, Ms. Pekarsky, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Dr. Anderson. That obviously shows that there is a great interest in the board, and we will work, and Mr. Frisch. So we will work to schedule that. And with that, this concludes the work session on SRNR.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, before we wrap up, if there were not, if there were next steps not captured here based on what we've been speaking about.
I have a next step that you would like to add, Ms. Omage?
Yeah, I wanted to capture a number of things that we were talking about. The first being perhaps in the next iteration of this, to revise the language to reflect care and culture. So for example, modifying phrases like "deal with" that exist in the packet, that's one. Another was regarding the notice. I know we had spoken about this before, but a number of my colleagues, you know, the board members mentioned this today, where we talked about a signature document outlining parent awareness of appeals options. So having that perhaps to look at. I mean, there are a number of them. I can go down the list. It's essentially everything I mentioned during this meeting.
So Ms. Omage, language changes to the draft document typically come in the form of an amendment to the document, since it's now been published and presented at a board meeting. So if you have language changes to the document, then certainly work with staff to get those language, those amendments done. And then you can present them when we revise the document or adopt it finally in June. As far as an additional, what you're saying as far as additional elements that should go into the document, if you could put those in next steps, that would allow the staff to create a draft, which they could then bring to a future work session. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it certainly makes sense. I mean, we would have to obviously craft the language. And I'm sure some of my colleagues had points that they mentioned that would be next steps as well, but.
Well, next steps, actually, if I can interrupt, this is the clerk. Next steps are for additional information that the board members will need to make a decision on the document. So if that helps.
So if we needed a new document for parents to have showing what their options are, that would be a next step, asking for that to be prepared.
Okay, so I mean, in that case, there have been a number of things raised. The first, one of them being, you know, outlining the existing strategies to report, track, and handle discrimination claims that is easily available to families to be able to potentially add that into the SRNR. So that would be a next step. I mentioned review and understanding, perhaps we can say, you know, to provide information about implementation of the language on religious prayer and accommodation, given the, what I was, that I was mentioning was restrictions. So, you know, are these being typed? Are we? Am I saying these?
We don't have an ability to modify them on the screen. But with your, your voice, it will be added to the, you know, this is being recorded.
Sure. I'll send an email to the clerks. I think that might be the most conducive. I was trying to understand what the process would be if any of us wanted to add, so.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Thank you, Ms. Omage. And with that, this work session is adjourned. And the board will go into a closed session. So if I can read the motion for closed session, and then we will take a brief break so people can go into the other session. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, hold on a second, I'm sorry, to consider personnel matters, specifically the performance. I'm sorry. As people exited, it keeps covering my screen, so I'm going to wait until people have exited, and then I will read it. Okay. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the performance to motion termination, dis- termination, discipline salaries or and/or resignation of specific public officers and specific public employees pursuant to section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.23711A7 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, specifically personnel issues. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Dr. Anderson, seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. All those in favor, please show your hand. And I have Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darinat Kofax, Ms. Seismarheiser, Ms. Marin, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Pekarsky, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omage, Ms. Corbett Sanders. And it seems that Mr. Frisch has dropped out of the session. That motion carries. We are now going into closed session. It is 4:59. I am going to give people a five-minute break before we go into the, we pick up on the other blackboard collaborate, collaborate meeting. Thank you.